Gardner City Council will come to order if we stand for the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to govern the land with which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome. We have no presentations this evening, so we will go straight to public comment. We have time allotted on the agenda for anyone who wishes to speak on an item that does not appear on the agenda, or on an item that is on the agenda that is not part of a public hearing. Just to note, there are no public hearings scheduled this evening. Yes?
My name is Cindy Weeks, 121 West Park Street here in Gardner. I wanted to make just a couple of comments on the proposed rezoning for the Bruce Funeral Home. It went through Planning Commission with six to one vote. Several of us who live on that street, on Park Street, who will be directly impacted by the proposed change spoke up with our concerns and issues regarding that proposal. Several of them weren't really discussed much. They did thoroughly discuss the traffic, but we felt that the proposed landscape plan is insufficient if it is approved. Even the staff report, the planner's staff report stated that the proposed landscape plan does not at this time fully meet the city's minimum requirements. We would like to see, if it is approved, the proposed parking lot, more extensive landscaping along Park Street to better screen that parking lot from, you know, those of us who sit out on, walk along the sidewalk and sit on our front porches in the evenings and really don't desire to look across the street at a parking lot. So better screening would certainly help soften it and help as much as possible to preserve the character and charm of our old neighborhood. Also, we have some serious concerns about the proposed architectural design of the parking garage there, the three-car garage. Though we understand the desire for it, we would hope that you could place a little bit more stringent requirements so that it would look more like a residence there. You know, just some exterior design changes could make it look, put a front porch, put a front door, make it look like a house sitting there even though it would be used for something else. So if you could consider some of the aesthetic needs of our neighborhood and our desire to maintain the older-time charm that resides in very few of our neighborhoods now. Park Street neighborhood is one of the oldest in Gardner, and we, those of us who live there have been there a long time, and we have new families moving in, and people drive down our street just to look at our street. So we'd like your help to preserve as much as possible the character and charm of our little street. Thank you.
Thanks, Cindy. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you for letting me have an opportunity to speak. I'm Kathy Schnorenberg, S.D.H.N.O.R.E.N. Berg, and I'm at 223 West Park and been there for 35 years. We really love our street. Several things that we were concerned about in the earlier meeting that was held, some discussions were made concerning safety, and it seems that there was a lot of discussion about whether the people currently parking elsewhere would be safe crossing Center Street as they have. But what concerns me more is that the architectural plans show an exit onto Park Street where there are young children, and it's a quiet street. So if the city decides to go ahead and allow that to become a parking lot, we would like to see a change in the architectural plan so that there's not an exit onto Park Street. There still will be an exit where there is the current alley according to the architectural plans, and there's still an exit onto Main Street according to the architectural plans. And so if the exit onto Park Street could be eliminated, that would cut out a lot of traffic, which would be a big concern to us. Another thing that, in line with Ms. Weeks' conversation, was the landscaping. There is a tree there that, I tried to do some research at the museum to find out exactly how old that tree is. It's an oak tree, and it's close to Park Street at the back end of the property proposed to be removed, the house to be removed, which faces Center Street. And the oak tree's about this big around, and it's a very healthy tree. And if the landscaping could be adjusted to include that tree, perhaps with some benches around it and some greenery, that would make that area, even if a parking lot is needed, some of the parking spaces could be forfeited in light of maintaining what is one of the oldest and nicest parts of our city. I see sometimes when areas that are residential move into commercial, I see a change in Olafah and in parts of Gardner that it no longer has the residential feel, and it, in my opinion, is the beginning of the demise of a neighborhood. And so in that regard, I would still hold with, let's find parking someplace else, like maybe the bank's parking space that has just the flags at it or other things. I would still hold with that, but I may be overruled on that. And so if that's the case, I would also like to comment on making the elevation picture of the side of the three-car garage, along with Ms. Weeks' comments. I would also like to see that look more like an old-fashioned home. And Shirley was concerned about whether there would be safety, since there's not somebody there living in that garage, whether there'd be safety with kids breaking in or something. But I've noticed that in Olafah, there have been several properties where a fake window is made. It's just sheet rock on the inside, so no entry can take place. If you want to look at it sometime, Chipotle's is one example, which is up by the Home Depot on 153rd Street. So those are the things that I was concerned about: the tree, the exit onto Park Street, changing the elevation, changing the Park Street side of it so it looks more like a house, and putting in more greenery. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, my name is Chris Olson. I live at 150 West Park, and I have lived at that, in that house since 1980. And I'd like to voice my concerns about the parking lot proposition. I mean, I'll just state the obvious: if you put pavement down over roots of trees, you don't have trees anymore. So we'll have just a bare asphalt parking lot is what it'll end up with. And also, I'd like to voice my concern as far as the elevation of, you know, if you're driving down Center the way it's proposed, or even going west on Park, all you're going to see is garage doors. If there could be something changed there, it would be much more visually appealing to the neighborhood, and I just wanted to voice my opinion in that regard. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
My name's Diane Stevens. I live at 143 West Park. Thank you for this opportunity to speak for you. I urge the City Council to reject the zoning change on the grounds, but the plan submitted is excessive for its stated use, does not meet Gardner's own ordinance requirement, and finally, because this change in the plan behind it causes irrevocable damage to the surrounding neighborhood. The parking lot defined by the submitted plan creates 54 spaces while only 39 are required for the funeral home use capacity. The difference is a planned parking lot that is 30% larger than it needs to be. Fortunately, the funeral home is used infrequently. However, for the amount of use this parking lot would get, approximately 25 hours per month, a lot of this size is excessive. Furthermore, interior landscaping requirements for parking lots as established by Gardner Code 18.165.060 state that not less than 6% of interior parking lots be landscaped with species selected to provide shade when mature, exclusive of any planting requirements along the perimeter of a lot. Since the submitted plan does not include any interior landscaping, and since the proposed zoning change is contingent on the submitted plan, the application for a zoning change must be rejected. Lastly, it has been stated that this plan actually enhances the neighborhood by replacing vacant and neglected homes with a parking lot and by preventing any construction of a multifamily home. I find this argument cynical and disingenuous. More damaging to our neighborhood than neglected homes or future apartments is the removal of these lots from residential use. Neighborhoods, like houses, must be inhabited to thrive or even persist. A neighborhood where homes are replaced by parking lots is a neighborhood that is slowly dying. Creative alternatives exist that would provide the needed parking space while allowing the lots to be used later for residential development. If we cannot recognize the inherent value of this extant neighborhood, complete with its homes, original to our town's history, century-old trees in connection to historic downtown, then a failure of imagination has occurred. The resulting expanse of concrete and asphalt at Park and Center will become a monument to our failure. Based on these considerations, I urge the City Council to reject the application for a zoning change. At the very least, the application must be resubmitted with a revised plan that conforms to Gardner's zoning requirements. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Kip Willenauer. I live at 117 West Main. I am adjacent homeowner to the funeral home, have been there for 33 years. Mrs. Brown has worked hard to maintain that property, to maintain the business, and to build the business, and this is one more step. She's taken an extreme amount of time, energy, money to prepare this endeavor and this project, and certainly would enhance my neighborhood where I live, and I appreciate your time and hope that you pass this.
Thanks, Kip. Thank you. There being no other comments, we will move on to the consent agenda. Is there a council member who wishes to remove an item from the consent agenda?
One and three, please.
How would council like to proceed with consent agenda item number two?
Remove, we approve consent agenda item number two.
Second? Motion, Morrow, second, for Gorsick, that we approve consent agenda item number two. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Consent item number one, standing approval of the minutes, is written for the meeting on June 4th, 2012.
Just one small change on page 54. New business item two, where it says, "Council member Harrison moved to appoint Council member Morrow to serve as council vice president." Councilman, or Council member Freeman seconded the motion. That is not correct. I was actually the one to second that motion.
Okay.
Two, three, four.
Thanks for that.
Trying to make sure it's accurate.
Okay. Regarding then, consent item number one.
Remove, we approve consent agenda item number one.
Second? Motion, Morrow, second, Freeman, that we approve consent items number one. All right. Item number three.
We need to, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. All right. Item number three.
I just had some questions about that contract.
Okay.
So how long is, do, okay. Laura, how long is the current contract?
Well, this is an extension, so...
This one?
This one would supersede the other one.
When did this one, when was this one supposed to end?
I think it was a five-year, and this would be like year three. I don't have it in front of me, but it was, kind of starts over again, but I think it was, oh, gosh, it's roughly three years old.
And did we get any competing bids?
We do not, because it's the backbone of the IT system. To change to another provider now requires router changes, IP address changes. This is not, this is not something that you change based on the lowest bidder, because it affects everything in the city. We have open court holds for things that pass through like payroll and our core business software. This would be a really big deal to change the IT backbone.
Do you know if the agreement, the 36-month that we'd be agreeing to here, does it have like a rollover clause or anything like that where we have to anticipate renewing that or be proactive about receiving bids if we want to make a change at that point so we don't miss that timeline?
It does not have an automatic renewal clause.
Okay.
And we did have, I've been here a long time, but we have had other providers in the past, and it was not a good situation.
What was bad about it? What do you?
They were not able to support the city's needs for bandwidth, even though they said they could. And when we called, they were not responsive, and that is not okay when your IT for a whole city does not work, and they don't, CenturyLink has, is immediately responsive. This actually was kind of an accident. We were just trying to get a budget estimate on how much it would cost to increase our bandwidth, because we're always talking about cloud products and whatever, and we don't have, we can't even go there until we have more. And it was so inexpensive, that's why I just brought it before you and said, "This is really, really cheap, and it's not even half of what we need to get into a really big cloud applications of any kind." We were told that to even consider doing any things like Google Docs or any of that stuff, you need at least 10 megabytes per second, and we're not, we're at three.
Will we be locking ourselves in with a 36-month agreement from looking to an increase to 10? Outside, by a different provider, will we be locked in with Century till we need to bump into that 10 to manage the city's business?
I suppose you would, yes, because, but I don't, in my humble opinion, I don't think you're anywhere near ready to go to any of those bigger things like Google Docs, and that we have an IT staff of one, so you'd be tapping into a whole bunch of outsourced. I attended a presentation by Google, and actually it didn't go very well because the hotel they had it in, the conference hotel, didn't have enough bandwidth for them to show us the presentation. So, and many cities are discussing it. The only one I'm aware of that has gone forward is Columbia, Missouri, and they only went forward with their email only, because it's so, some of the really big cities and some of the really big states have done it, but not anybody around here for me to talk to.
Are we certain that CenturyLink can make the jump to 10? I don't know for certain.
I do not know.
You don't know that?
I have not asked them. I only asked them for the, I asked Alex to investigate the next step up, which was five.
Do we think a three-year window is too long-term, or long, can we operate at five for three years, in your most humble of opinions?
Yeah, you're getting kind of out there. Probably, because I don't see a lot of cloud things. We're looking right now at, there's a new piece of our payroll processing that's a cloud product, but it's not supposed to be huge, and the core business software is a cloud product, and it is huge. And if we add modules, that just makes it more bandwidth needed, but I don't know that we'll be doing a lot of adding of modules in the next three years.
Okay.
But, you know, things do change. My humble opinion is we're probably okay with three years.
Why don't we make it, why don't we try to target the two-year period so the remaining term of the contract we've already signed gets us the ability to look at bandwidth, you know, in the future rather than extend it another year at that price? See what I'm saying? In other words...
I do.
We got three years into the five-year contract, and why don't we just make it a two-year?
Well, there was two contracts. There was one for a T, you guys are getting kind of out of my league here, but there was two contracts, one was for long-distance service and other stuff, and one was for this P2 data-related stuff. And all I asked for was the data, because again, to change the IT backbone is a really big deal. And I'm not really anticipating changing a provider, no matter what, because I can't see it being hugely cheaper, and the cost to change everything is going to be pretty significant.
If we're three years into, assuming we're three years into the agreement with CenturyLink on this plan, have we had any service-related issues that they've not been able to address?
No, sir.
Okay.
Nothing, absolutely nothing, because they're very, very responsive.
How many routers do we have that need to be changed?
I don't know. I just know that it, there's ISP addresses for printers and servers and remote sites, and there's open portals for the core business software and the payroll software, and, I mean, this is a big, security cameras, there's IP addresses for security cameras and IP addresses for SCADA systems, and it's not just routers. It's things that I don't, it's like magic, I don't know. I, all I know is that it's a big deal, and cities do not just change providers because you get an extra $100 off a month.
So how many man-hours are we talking about to change these numbers?
I do not know. I can't even, I cannot give you an intelligent, educated guess. I just, my simple thing was, we can almost double our bandwidth for $290 a month. That was, that was it. That was my argument. And CenturyLink offered it. Hey, for three years, we'll do it for $290 a month. It was, it was that simple.
Then really, we'd only be extending our agreement by a year because we'd be locked in for that?
Well, you have two different agreements, like I said.
Okay.
There's one for everything but data, and this was for the data. And we had originally done them both at the same time, and I think it was three years ago. The years kind of all run together, but it was roughly three years ago, and this one is just, this one starts over if you approve this here for three years. So they will not run together, and I do not know if CenturyLink will give the same deal for two years. Maybe they will, I did not ask. They, they came up with this in response to a question on if we were to go to the next step, what would it cost? And initially, the price was so much that Alex said, "It's too expensive." So Alex did what Alex does and got on the phone and said, "That's too expensive, what will you do?" And they came up with three years at $290 a month, because that's just what he does. He has good relationships with these people and just said, "We're not going to pay that, so never mind." And then they come back.
So it's a 66% increase in bandwidth for less than a 50% increase in the cost?
Right. I mean, it's, it's not even, the net effect, the IT fund isn't even $3,500 a year because we found some other little niggling fine tune. It's $2,600 a year net effect, but that's this year, you know, I don't want it to be next year.
Any other questions? How would council like to proceed?
Remove, we approve consent agenda item number three.
Is there a second? I second. Motion, Morrow, second, for Gorsick, that we approve consent agenda, consent agenda item number three. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Motion carries. New business item number one, considering a rezoning request for Bruce Funeral Home, located on the west side of Center Street between Main Street and Park Street, addressed as 106 and 114 South Center Street and 116 West Park Street. This is rezoning request Z-12-02, EDP 12-02.
Sorry, what did you say?
This also is an ordinance that would be 2395.
Hang on, Amy. There you go.
All right. This property is outlined in green on the screen before you. Currently zoned C1 for the north lot, and the southern three lots are zoned R5 Apartment House District. Other proposed zoning would take that all to the CP1 district, which is the planned central business district. Looking at the development plan map, you can see that the northern ones were shown as commercial and the southern ones were shown as residential. The 2010 aerial view of the site shows the funeral home on the north part, and you can see the two existing houses on the lots off of Park Street to the south. This shows the preliminary development plan with the parking lot that would be added and the proposed three-car garage with the one carport on the west side of the lot. It's a 1.34 acre property, and the preliminary development plan would remove those two houses and replace them with parking lot and the garage. There would be a new entrance off of Park Street to serve the parking lot, but the parking lot would also connect to the existing property with entrances on Center Street and Main Street. The applicant has requested vacation of the alley so that the lots can be plotted together as a single lot. This would be similar to what was done for the bank across the street with the access easement required to maintain public access through the property to get back to Center Street. For funeral homes, one parking space is required for every two employees and one for every four seating capacities, which should be 38 total spaces required for this property. The existing parking lot does not have a single designated parking stall. The new parking lot would provide 54, which would exceed requirements. Parking lot would be lit by new light poles around and within the interior of the lot. An applicant is aware that those will need to be shielded from adjacent properties. Landscaping that provides new trees along Center Street, also along Park Street and Main Street, and then additional site trees as well with the interior parking lot landscaping. It does not strictly meet the landscaping requirements, but it is an infill development, and due to the configuration of the lots, the size of the lots, it would be a little bit more difficult to meet the requirements for this property. Regardless...
Sorry, what did you say?
This also is an ordinance that would be 2395.
There you go.
All right. This property is outlined in green on the screen before you. Currently zoned C1 for the north lot, and the southern three lots are zoned R5 Apartment House District. Other proposed zoning would take that all to the CP1 district, which is the planned central business district. Now, looking at the development plan map, you can see that the northern lots were shown as commercial, and the southern ones were shown as residential. The 2010 aerial view of the site shows the funeral home on the north part, and you can see the two existing houses on the lots off of Park Street to the south. This shows the preliminary development plan with the parking lot that would be added, and the proposed three-car garage with the one carport on the west side of the lot. It's a 1.34 acre property, and the preliminary development plan would remove those two houses and replace them with parking lot and the garage. There would be a new entrance off of Park Street to serve the parking lot, but the parking lot would also connect to the existing property with entrances on Center Street and Main Street. The applicant has requested vacation of the alley so that the lots can be plotted together as a single lot. This would be similar to what was done for the bank across the street with the access easement required to maintain public access through the property to get back to Center For funeral homes, one parking space is required for every two employees and one for every four seating capacities, which should be 38 total spaces required for this property. The existing parking lot does not have a single designated parking stall. The new parking lot would provide 54, which would exceed requirements. Parking lot would be lit by new light poles around and within the interior of the lot. An applicant is aware that those will need to be shielded from adjacent properties. Landscaping that provides new trees along Center Street, also along Park Street and Main Street, and then additional site trees as well with the interior parking lot landscaping. It does not strictly meet the landscaping requirements, but it is an infill development. And due to the configuration of the lots, the size of the lots, it would be a little bit more difficult to meet the requirements for this property. Regardless, landscaping will be examined in more detail at the final development plan. Usually that's when all those details are worked out. The garage is considered an accessory building, not subject to our architectural design requirements. However, due to the situation with this property, it's important that it still blend into the neighborhood. That's, I mean, it does a good job of doing that, using a residential style of design. Six nearby property owners expressed concerns about the project during the public hearing on May 22. Some of those concerns included traffic from the entrance side of Park Street, loss of the residential character or historic feel of the neighborhood, potential for light pollution, and the increase in impervious surfaces. Most of these property owners were not necessarily opposed to the parking lot itself, but wanted those concerns to be better addressed. One of these did also present a petition to the planning commission requesting that the application be rejected. It did not meet the criteria for a valid protest petition, so it does not affect the number of required votes by the council for approval, but I did want to make you aware that that petition was presented. Three property owners also spoke in favor of the project, because the funeral home needs parking. It's a source of pride for the community with the historic building and well-maintained landscaping, and it would also reduce the number of vehicles parked along Park Street. Planning commission discussed it in great detail. Just to sort of summarize, they, for the most part, were in agreement to keep the access point on Park Street, that no alternative pavement should be necessary, that a parking lot would be preferable to an apartment building, in their opinion. Nearby residents, one commissioner felt had a reasonable expectation for the zoning and use of that property not to change, so he was actually opposed to the rezoning. Several of them, both sides, felt that the applicant should meet with surrounding residents and try to work out some of these issues with them. It came down to primarily that the planned zoning district will help protect this property from significant redevelopment without a public hearing. So it assures, it gives us more assurances for what happens with this property. A couple of commissioners also thought it was formidable to save the existing trees and houses. Ultimately, the planning commission recommended approval, six to one. Copeland was the one who opposed, subject to the stipulations on your screen. Are there any questions to the staff? And just to remind you, you have three options tonight. You can accept the planning commission's recommendation, you could reject the planning commission recommendation, and deny the application with a larger majority, or you can remand the application back to the planning commission for further consideration.
Any questions for staff?
What?
Go ahead.
What was mentioned, that the plan doesn't meet certain development requirements? I believe resident Diane Stevens even quoted municipal code 18-165-60. Is, is it not in compliance with, with that code?
There are certain parts that it's not strictly in compliance with. The landscaping and the setbacks, the parking lot setbacks, it does not actually meet those. Normally, we wouldn't be considering it if it didn't meet those, but in this case, it's the planned zoning district, which allows the planning commission to look at the situation and see if it makes sense for this particular situation. For example, in a planned district, they might say, "Okay, well, you can do the reduced setback in exchange for, you know, doing more landscaping," or, you know, something else. In this case, they felt that due to the downtown and the older lots and the difficulties with the situation, they felt that this was a good plan.
So the conditions that the planning commission recommended are, are B, C, and D? Is that correct, or?
A, B, C, and D.
So how are they going to comply with the regulations? I guess you're saying they have the ability to waiver that, the interior landscaping?
They do have that ability as part of the planned zoning district.
And the 38 spaces versus 54?
They're actually providing 54 spaces. 38 is the minimum required, so that's not a concern there.
So they can, they can produce more spaces, I think?
Yes, they just can't do less.
With approval tonight, does the planning commission, with the final plans as they go forward, have any, I guess, input with some of these landscaping concerns that have been brought up, and how they haven't met the minimum standards, especially along, I looked at the plans along the Park Street side, where there might be an opportunity to do a bit more on that side of it, and meet some of the square footage minimum requirements by actually landscaping some of those a little bit further. The way I look at it, please correct me if I'm missing it, but the added trees as well, to maybe meet some of those minimum requirements in the final development plan. Or if it's approved tonight, do they not have to go any further with the landscaping plan, and make a move as opposed?
No, the landscaping plan is actually approved with the final development plan. So we do require them to submit it with the preliminary plan so we can get an idea of what they're proposing, but all those details of the landscape plan will be worked out when the final development plan goes before the planning commission. So they will have some say in that sort of thing. There are a number of other issues with the landscaping, and why it happened the way that it did, with utilities along the street and that sort of thing. So, I mean, there's a lot of different factors to consider. I think that, in my conversations with the applicant, she is willing to maybe do a little bit more along Park Street, as far as shrubs or flowers or something of that nature. But with the right-of-way line and the utilities, that's something that we're going to have to sit down and look more at, to see what exactly is possible.
Is this irrigated or non-irrigated landscaping?
I believe non-irrigated. Non-irrigated.
What was the planning commission's, I understand their opinion of the exit onto Park Street, but do they have a different recommendation versus that exit, serving as an exit but elsewhere?
I'm not sure following your question.
So I see that there's an exit onto Park Street.
Right.
But did the planning commission have a separate recommendation for an exit elsewhere? Like onto Main, or not have an exit at all?
Well, it has the, the existing exits on Main and Center for the funeral home, and then the new one off of Park Street that's proposed, they were in agreement for the most part with that. That was something they discussed a little bit, but not in the extreme detail.
Okay.
I mean, will it be possible with the parking lot, with the exit onto Park Street, to limit that as a, as a left-turn-only exit out of the lot itself, to limit the traffic that comes from an event onto the street actually now? I understand coming in might be harder on the way out, if we can limit that and focus it back onto the main thoroughfare, it might lessen some of that neighborhood traffic.
Would it be right-only or left-only? East?
It'd be a left-only out of the lot.
Okay.
The only way you can truly do a left-only and have it actually be successful as a left-only is if you have a median, which is probably never going to happen in this location. In staff's opinion, there's not, this isn't like a restaurant or something where there's cars going in and out constantly. It's a funeral home where they have funerals, I forgot the statistics really provided, but, you know, several times throughout the year, but it's not a daily occurrence. And so with the traffic volumes and the ability to go out on the Main or Center, which are the more major streets, we suspect that there will not be a lot of people going west on Park Street from the funeral home.
How many, how many services were there in just, I mean, 2001 ballpark? I didn't.
Total usage for last year was 62. Two were day visitations, 32 were night visitations when the parking lot was used, 16 was day funeral, and 12 was visitation and funeral in the daytime.
So there was a total of 28 surely here in the daytime?
32 and 12.
Okay. No, 32 at night?
32 and 12, yep.
Okay.
Yeah, I might ask some of the other members of the council. I, I've been to a couple of services at the funeral home. I mean, I, just twice, but I ended up parking on Park Street both, both times. Once heading west, once heading east. And even then, I mean, I, I had to walk 50, 100 yards to get up to the funeral home. So, and that's just food for thought. It's going to, it's going to, it's certainly going to impact congestion on Park Street.
Mary J. Reddy, you might be able to answer this better, but how often have we received concerns and complaints about the street parking for services? How often has that come up? Has that been something that's been constant for probably as long as, been going, or has it been?
I, you know, I can't answer to the, to the, to the, to the business, but we've not had complaints per se about parking along the street, it's public streets, so, you know, it's just that, the issue that, the issue that we have heard about is the crossing of Center, because the bank typically is very, and, you know, they're, they're not open in the evening for the evening services, and that's a very common place to park. And that's the, the feedback that we get is that, you know, there's mid-block crossing, which you shouldn't do, but most folks don't walk down to the light and then over, but there is a crosswalk at Park Street, and that's, and that's utilized. So there's a lot of pedestrian traffic. And that's the, that's the feedback that we've had regarding the parking, is the, the issue of crossing Center Street. And then with respect to the processions for burial, if that's the, you know, if they originate at the, at the funeral home, it's getting everybody lined up and, and moving. Typically, if the, the services are held at, you know, one of the churches in town, it's a little different scenario, but it's the, it's, it's that traffic issue. And we, we do, we provide police for escort if necessary and needed, and also for managing the traffic flow. And I don't see that that would necessarily stop if everybody's exiting from the same, from the same side of the, of the street either. So, but it's, yeah, we have not had complaints per se about the parking, just that. It's, it's a challenge, the, you know, the, the comment about the exit onto, onto, onto Park, I actually, I don't see, and I don't know, I don't see that as a processionary exit more, you know, that's mostly, I think, folks just kind of coming in and out for visitation or coming in for the service.
I guess my, my only other question that I can think of, I, so, before construction begins, the final development plans have to be approved by the planning commission again?
That's correct.
Okay.
So, in that area that's considered currently zoned for apartments, how many apartments could you put there on that small space?
Well, I mean, I'm not sure exactly. I haven't had to calculate out based off square footage of apartments, but you could put a three-story building there by right, and then you would also have the parking lot that goes with it. So, I mean, it's, it could be a fairly substantial development, even though it's a smaller lot.
A three-story, how many, I mean, approximately how many units with proposed parking would there be? I mean, are we, do we think that's really likely?
Well, that's what it's zoned for right now. Right now, we've got a non-conforming use, and so that's the only thing that can go there if this gets denied, if the use changes. So I don't know the number of units. I mean, I would have to, to sit down with my scale and try to draw something out to estimate that.
Just based on past developments, would you hazard a guess with the required parking?
I'm not sure a guess would be of any value, Councilman.
I guess it's, I'm trying to, what I'm trying to get at is, it might be that that would be a suitable spot for apartments.
Do you have an idea of how many units you think we're doing in the spot?
I don't know. I haven't, I really don't have any idea.
I've got a question for you. I'm sorry, are you done?
Well, not really. I just, I guess I just wanted to, do we think that's really a suitable place for apartments? Would the planning commission approve it? I mean, given?
Well, the planning commission would only be considering the site plan, not the use. If it's a proposed use that's allowed by right in that zoning district, they can make comments as far as how the site was being developed, but not on the use itself. The zoning is what determines that, and it's already zoned for it.
And didn't we have a similar situation in a block away where we had, where the, the same land was zoned for apartments, and?
Correct. Across the street, the houses, on Park Street and Warren Street, several of the residents had come, proposed to rezon because they found out they were zoned R5, and they wanted to be zoned R1 for the, the single-family houses. We're not exactly sure when the R5 zoning got into place. It goes back at least 30 years, and the records aren't very clear as far as exactly how that came to be. But the R5 zoning was something that we had talked about in recent years as perhaps not being very appropriate for that area, so we would have preferred to see the R1, so when those residents came forward, but that, that was approved. And in this case, we've got the existing C1 property, and then we've got some of the remaining R5 that did not participate in that other rezoning. So this should either be C1, or CP1, or R1, or RP1, in my opinion. Probably not R5.
Sorry, go ahead.
So moving right along to the exterior structure of the garage, to follow up with the comment that we heard earlier from the neighbors to the west, what kind of architectural options do we have versus what we see in front of us to flow, if you will, with, with the neighborhood? Was there anything like that discussed from the planning commission's perspective?
The planning commission, building elevations are, like landscaping, looked at in more detail at the final development plan. One commissioner did make a comment that he thought a little bit more could be done with that. The elevations, in staff's opinion, the elevations already do a pretty good job of trying to blend into the neighborhood, using a more residential style of garage as opposed to a commercial or industrial type of garage. You've got the siding and the pitched roof with the gable, the windows, she's agreed to put shutters on, and that sort of thing, blend the, or coordinate the colors with the existing building. It's also located to help buffer the parking lot from the neighborhood. That's why it's located on the west side, with the doors facing east. So there was a lot, quite a bit of thought that went into the design and trying to make this fit better into the neighborhood. You're not going to have a perfect situation either way. Both sides have very good points with, you know, the, the business meeting, the parking, and the residents wanting to protect their neighborhood. And so, you know, there's not really a perfect answer, but in staff's opinion, this is a great compromise.
Thank you.
But the, the elevations on the parking garage do meet the design standard, correct?
The, the garage elevations are not subject to the design standards because it's an accessory building.
Okay. Would, if they were a residence, would they meet the design standard? I, I realize that they don't have to have, that it's, it doesn't have an entrance onto Park Street, but it's a garage, doesn't really require an entrance onto Park Street. Would the rest of it comply?
I didn't evaluate against the design standard since it wasn't subject to them. Off the top of my head, there might be one or two minor changes that would allow it to meet it, that's not significantly different.
Okay. And I- And I actually watched the videotape of the, the Planning Commission meeting. I believe one of the residents of Park Street got up and spoke about the many different architectural styles that were up and down Park Street. I mean, there must have been 10 or 12 or more. Would that be a fair assessment?
I believe that was the comment made at the meeting.
So we don't have, like, one style for the whole neighborhood? I love Park Street.
It's in that sort of neighborhood.
Yeah, it's a lot, a whole lot of different styles, but very charming nonetheless.
No, understanding some of the concerns from the residents on Park Street, I would like to see a little bit of consideration made looking at the elevation drawings of an entryway and possibly what you would consider more front-facing windows on the south elevation as the Planning Commission receives this. Because that would give it a little bit more residential feel on that front side of the building that faces the other homes. And even if it were a small porch with even an overhang that would be minimal, it would still give a little bit more of that impression and might, might give those folks a little bit more. While it's not going to be a home, it would give a minimal feel to that. And even some of the landscaping can complement that even a bit further. I certainly can't talk about how much has gone into the drawings and the efforts I've been taking thus far, but simply moving the restroom to the north side and moving the entryway onto the south side might accommodate some of those things. And certainly something I'd like to have considered as it moves forward and the Planning Commission takes into consideration when they're looking for the final approval. And it might accommodate even some of the different landscaping parameters going into place because if they work towards that entryway a little bit more, it might meet some of those square footage things a little bit differently as well.
These are all issues that the Planning Commission will discuss at the final development plan approval.
I want to email some things.
I was going to say, if you want that, you might want to come to the meeting and, or email ahead of time regarding that. Any other questions? Other questions for the applicant?
I have, go ahead.
Oh, I did just want one clarification, Amy or anyone on the council. I didn't know if there'd been any response received from anyone that was not a resident of Park Street with any issues with the zoning request or if it's been tied mostly to the residents on the street, if there's been anything outside that.
My only contact has been with folks that live on-
Larry, have you?
No.
I have a question for Shirley. More is just confirmation. It's my understanding that the houses that are being replaced, you guys, you own, and it looks like they're going to be relocated and donated, is that correct?
Correct. I'm getting one.
Okay, thank you.
So are those currently being rented?
No, they're vacant at the time. They were rented yet.
Other questions?
So I guess, one other question. You know, how do you answer somebody like Commissioner Copeland that said people have a right to expect that when they buy a house on a street that the zoning doesn't change? How do you answer that?
Well, I mean, that's sort of a loaded question. But I think that, you know, people do expect, I know, for example, when I was growing up, we moved into a house that was on the outskirts of town, and everybody thought that the farm fields next to it were going to be farm fields. Nobody ever thought about the fact that, hey, this is owned commercial, not residential. And so, you know, it's just one of those things that a lot of people just don't think to check those things. My guess is a lot of the residents that are protesting the rezoning probably didn't realize that they were zoned for apartments up until they discovered that their own properties were. In some cases, they weren't part of that, they were already a single family. So, and just in my personal experience, there's not that many people that go and look at the zoning of all the surrounding properties before they purchase their home. I do think that with regards to the use, you do tend to expect that, you know, there's a house that's been here 100 years, it's going to stay a house. But in a downtown area specifically, next to a commercial area, you can start to imagine that as the downtown grows, things may change, especially along those major streets. This isn't back off the main streets, it's directly on the main street. So I think that in this case, it's not completely implausible to think that this could have happened if someone was investigating that sort of thing.
Did the development plan actually showed it as?
The development plan shows it as low-density residential.
Does it? Okay.
Which would include apartments or not?
No.
So how do you reconcile those two contradictions?
The zoning and the development plan?
Right.
Well, presumably when the, I wasn't here at the time, but when the development plan showed it as low-density residential, my assumption is that they saw that the zoning was for apartments, realized, hey, we don't want this neighborhood to be destroyed and turned into apartments. And so they went ahead and changed the plan to show it for low-density residential to try to help protect that neighborhood. It's more difficult to change the zoning than it is to change the development plan. So they were probably hoping that it would just stay that way, is my assumption.
Does the city have the ability, without a petition from the owners, to change the zoning? Because you indicated you thought it should be RP1 or what did you say it should be?
I would, because this area of the R5 that's remaining is so small, I would think that probably low-density residential or commercial would make more sense there. Might have a medium density too, but the high-density apartments, I don't think is a very good idea in that location. You can do a rezoning without the property owner's permission, but that's a big can of worms that we usually try to avoid opening.
What does that can involve as far as interior contents?
Well, we just generally have, on the most basic level, have a policy. We don't generally try to pour something on people if they don't want it, when we can avoid it, so.
Larry, I think you asked a good question. So as a real estate agent, how do you do your due diligence in that same setting? If you're selling a house to somebody, how do you help them understand what those potential, kind of to her comment that a cornfield is not going to be a cornfield for, you know, a long period of time? How do you do that?
I mean, if you're a good agent, you probably check into that for the buyer.
I assume you are, so how would you do that?
I'd call Amy, say what's the intended use here. And, but I mean, the development, the, what's the term? I can't remember, the development map or the-
The development plan map.
Development plan map would seem to indicate that the city had a desire to change it to, you know, to a use that seemed more consistent with that neighborhood. So, I mean, that seems like to me that if we're going to stick with the development plan that, and we don't think that that apartment use really is applicable to that neighborhood, then why wouldn't we change it?
We are talking about the development plan from 1998? It's only had, it's only had updates since then?
Well, it's had an update. I mean, the last one we've had, I think, was 2005 or '06. It shows, does it show the same information? I'm assuming that when you change-
The land uses for that part of the city were not changed.
So, but I mean, they were certainly, they could have been changed.
They've not changed since that update, at least, the '98 update, I believe.
In reference, go ahead.
But I guess when you consider it, when you reconsider, when you do a development plan, you certainly say what things need to be changed, right? So just because it wasn't changed doesn't mean that-
Yes, but with the thousands of parcels in the city, you're probably not going to get down to every small little parcel. Does this one need to change to this, 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 or this? I mean, if you're going to identify, hey, we've got a problem area here, we've got something that doesn't work, and you look at ways to fix it, you're not going to go back and reevaluate every individual parcel.
Just looking at the staff report, it mentions the community development plan 2008 designated part of this area to be reserved for commercial uses and then the other part for low-density residential uses. You know what the split, or what was reserved for commercial uses on that plan was?
The, you can see it's outlined in green on the map. The red indicates commercial uses, and the yellow is the low-density residential.
Okay. So we've got commercial on all four corners of the, I don't know, second busiest intersection?